Okay, welcome everyone. We're going to come back into session. Will you all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Mayor No?
Here.
Okay, ceremonial matters. We have one proclamation, a proclamation of the Placerville City Council recognizing the month of October 2024 as All Colors, All Cancers Awareness Month. This is a very long proclamation, so I'm going to highlight it some points for you. Cancer is the second-leading cause of death in the United States overall. Six of the top 10 cancers are breast, prostate, endometrial, pancreatic, kidney, and melanoma. Images of Hope has hosted the Pink in the Night Awareness Campaign throughout the month of October in conjunction with National Breast Cancer Awareness Month since 2013. And Andrew von der Schmidt has designed and fabricated an art installation of an awareness ribbon that's installed at the bell tower, and this will be the fifth year of its installation. Whereas the city council joins communities across our nation in increasing awareness about the importance for everyone to make informed decisions with their health care providers about early detection and testing for all types of cancer. So please, get tested. Andrew here. Have your proclamation.
Where do you want? Where do you want?
Let me take a picture.
Dave's got the picture.
Dave's the picture guy now.
Very good.
Mayor No, council members, staff, thank you very much. I appreciate your support in this. Something near and dear to my heart. The work that Images of Hope does is incredible, and this initiative to raise awareness for early screenings for all types of cancer is super important. But to go get tested. And a particular thank you to Regina for reminding me to be here. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we are installing on the first. Drive by the bell tower and check it out. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. We really appreciate all your work with that. All right. We will move on to closed session report. City Attorney Bucher.
Thank you. The council met in closed session to consider an application from Claimant Daniel Vasquez to file a late claim against the city related to an incident that occurred in December of last year. After its deliberations, the council has denied the leave to file a late claim.
Thank you. Number five, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Passes. That brings us to number six, announcements and presentations to the public brief comments by the city council. We will start on my left. Councilmember Yarborough.
I have none.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Just a quick one. Went down to the truncated Oktoberfest, and it was a lot of fun. I used to always go see the wiener dog races every year. In fact, my old dog, our dogs that have passed away, used to compete in that. Although one of my dogs didn't really want to compete that much. He thought it was, you know, we were objectifying him, so he didn't do very well. That's my excuse for him. But, you know, it was a lot of fun, and I just, I actually missed the races because I made a mistake in walking to it that you run into too many people. And so by the time I actually got over to the races, they were over. But it was a lot of fun. Just want to thank all of the vendors and the producers as well for still putting something together for the residents of Placerville. So, that's it.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Gottberg?
I also attended the Doxent races on Saturday, which was quite fun, and costume contest. That was a fun community event that we have. I also attended the Secog field trip, which was really great to meet elected officials in the region and other communities. So thank you for inviting us to that. And then also, I just wanted to let folks know, I have deactivated my Facebook account, so if you were utilizing that as a means to communicate with me, please send me an email on my City of Placerville email address. It's posted on the city's website. And I'm more than happy to meet up with any city residents or business owners, you know, at a local coffee shop or restaurant or anything like that in the city. So I still want to meet with you. I'd just love to do it in person. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Clarici?
Nothing.
Okay. And then I have a few things. I attended the 9/11 El Dorado Advent School Ceremony. That's always a great ceremony if you haven't been to it. They get the kids involved and kind of engage them with the history, and that's a great thing. The city attorney and the chief of police and I did a government day with third graders, and that is always a super fun event, talking with the kids. Also attended the Secog and Oktoberfest, which they probably needed to rename September Fest or Harvest Moon Walk, but it still was a really good Saturday on Main Street. And then Vice Mayor Clarici and I met with the leaders of the People to People who run the program with our sister city at Marabi Japan. And next year will be the 50th anniversary, so they are working on doing some great planning. And if you're interested in that, the vice mayor would love some help.
Yeah, one of the, I'm getting over a cold, this stuff. Anyway, one of the various things we stress to this group, this is the 50th anniversary, and we really want to, as I think I said, do it right. And of course, that is still a work in progress, so we'll find out what right means. But we've asked them to provide us with some ideas. They've obviously done this before. And just for the folks that were at the meeting, my wife is really excited about going to Japan in October next year, so I think that's a doable thing.
I was just going to ask, are we sending a delegation then to Marabi?
My wife is sending a delegation.
That's the plan.
Yes.
Remember, the first year I was on city council, I remember going to an event, but it was here.
It was here, yeah. Well, they do one here.
We'll have an event, I believe it's the end of April. They'll come here, and then we go there in the fall. So, yeah, we'll get those dates out as we get that figured. We just had it in session meeting, so when, I think it's April 25th to May. So we don't have days with the ceremonies, we just have an outline of when they're going to be here.
We have a plan, a concept of a plan.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. Are there any council members who wish to pull an item? Seeing none, I will open the consent calendar to public comment. Seeing none, I will bring back the consent calendar to the council for a motion.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item eight, public comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matters not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Public comment is open. Step right up.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. I'm really glad we're going to have our cancer awareness ribbon at the tower again. Being a triple survivor, it means a lot to me. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, Mayor No and members of the council. I have in my hand a copy of Placerville's public art master plan, and it was approved through page 13. And my question is, what happens next?
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, seeing no one else, we will bring it back to the council. 8.2, are there any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And Kathy, we will follow up with you. Items nine, we have none. Number 10, no ordinances. Number 11, no public hearings, which brings us to 12.1, consider an appeal filed by Paul Monson on a fine, third administrative fine levied on 384 Placerville Drive for failure to respond to notice to correct. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just for clarification, this appeal is an appeal of a third administrative fine, the amount of $500, which was a timely appeal. This is not an appeal of the violation, nor the first admin fine of $100, nor the second admin fine of $200. The appeal time periods for these have expired. The property has come into compliance, thus the violation is currently abated, and we will not be issuing a fourth administrative fine. The case is closed. So the property owner was originally cited for sign violations. It was mailed a notice to correct. The notice of correct was sent to the property owner via certified mail, and the letter then being returned as refused. Subsequently, a first, second, and then a third subject, third administrative violation letters were all sent, all being returned as refused. And we attached a timeline to your staff report. Third administrative fine in the amount of $500 was sent certified letter on August 22 of 2024 with a deadline of September 4, 2024, to file an appeal. Staff met with Mr. Monson on August 27, and explained that staff cannot remove the fine unless the fine was levied in error. He was advised that he could file an appeal. A timely appeal was filed with the city clerk on August 30, within the 10-day appeal period. Again, the first and second administrative fines on the appeal are not timely and are not subject to this appeal. Mr. Monson's reason for the return certified letters was because he had instructed his personnel not to open the mail while he was indisposed. Staff explained that unfortunately, these, staff did not consider this to be sufficient grounds to rescind the fine. Staff also explained that the imposition of fines is to cover the costs of pursuing code enforcement, which typically can include staff site inspections, preparation of notices, and mailings. And staff would just like to note to the council that pursuant to Code Section 1-4B-1 does allow the city to recover any and all expenses of abatement. Depending upon the nature of the abatement, billing in a time and materials manner can exceed the fine. But a fine is just very simple because we're not accounting for all of the hours spent. So with that, staff has nothing more to add, and staff recommends denying the appeal. Happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the council? I will assume you are Paul Monson?
I am.
Okay.
I've prepared some remarks.
Okay, you can hand them to Regina.
I didn't know. I've never done this, so I didn't know if I can share it out. But that's what you can follow along with what I'm going to say. Hopefully it's done in three minutes. Yeah. Let's see, the discussion, I'll just go straight to the discussion. I am the property owner and was involved in a very serious accident over a year ago or so, immobilized, hospitalized and immobilized for three months. Hospital and doctor visits, along with physical therapy, haven't allowed me to maintain an office really anywhere other than my home. And so, as far as the first and second administrative fines, they weren't appealed timely because I didn't know about the notice to correct, because I didn't receive them. The reason for the return certified letters is that I was not there to sign them due to my injury and subsequent recovery attempt. And there was really no notice from the post office that there was an attempt to deliver any certified letters to the office. But I have the address I had on file here. Anyway, the people that are at the location instructed to collect the mail until I can get a chance to retrieve it. And then on August 21, the letter sent by, there was a letter sent by regular mail. Mr. Rivas didn't mention that it was sent by regular mail, but there was one sent by regular mail, and it was the first notice that I had received regarding a sign violation. And, let's see, I had not retrieved the mail during that period until August 27, which is the day that I called and was wondering about all these notices. And anyway, and I put some exhibits, that's the actual sign that we're talking about. You may know Annie's Mimosas. So the minute that we found out that that was a problem, I went and had it removed. And it took 15 minutes or so from my handy guy that's around there. So anyway, I just want to say that I'm a responsible property owner. I have a couple buildings here in Placerville, and I would never willfully disregard any notice of any kind if received. And in this unusual circumstance, I respectfully request that the fines be waived by the council.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the council for the applicant? No? Okay, we will take public comment on this item?
Sue Rodman, resident. Seems to me like mercy should be something that we do in Placerville, too. So my vote would be to go ahead and, since he's already abated the problem, call it good. And forget the fines. Forget collecting the fines.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will bring this back to the council for discussion.
I'll start. I think we were to go with this. I appreciate Mr. Monson being here with us this evening. I think that says a lot. Sometimes we get these and are asked for to do something and the person isn't even in the room. So I appreciate him being here. Geez. I mean, we've had this, this is similar, but not to, you know, I think the sign violations in terms of, you know, we have, we have code enforcement, we have staff doing their jobs, what they're being paid to do, which is to enforce our codes and to provide that service to the city and to the residents of Placerville. And we've, we've balanced those things every time differently. And I think that's okay in some degree because every case is unique in its own right. And so, I think we're always looking for what the best outcome can be as opposed to just, you know, because we do have discretion as opposed to just sort of doing a blanket proposal across the board. In this case, this is the first I've known about the property owner. I was, I'll tell you, when I first read this, I didn't really, I thought, well, look, if this was a letter from the IRS or the franchise tax board, nobody would be ignoring it. And, you know, they'd be on the phone to a government entity right away. I have no way to verify whether or not the other notices to correct were ever received or not. I mean, that's why you send something certified mailed, so there is a paper trail. That's what our, that's what our staff did. I think if it were me, I probably would have advised my staff to tell people that I was not just indisposed, but I was in a serious accident and could not get to things. But certainly, you know, taxes still get filed, things still get done regardless of our, you know, personal conditions. This was a pretty minor change. I mean, looking at that sign, it's not a really big area. It wasn't like a big monument sign of just Annie's Mimosas. Not that it matters, I guess, but I'm trying to, I guess, come to an agreement here. But, I mean, I think there were errors all along. I, I don't think, I think there were errors on behalf of the property owner because you don't just ignore certified mail. I find it hard to believe that it was never actually delivered. On the other hand, Mr. Monson had a serious injury, was in the hospital, according to his statements here, which is a unique situation. I'm, you know, he's having to pay those first two fines, right? The $100 and the $200, because those are already past dates.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, those are already past, so that's not an action that we can contemplate here. So because those have already passed, I would be comfortable with still having him pay that $300 in fine and maybe waiving this $500 one. And I'm open to discussion on that.
You know, this is kind of, this is one of these things with dealing with stuff. If you, if you just send it by the mail, then someone will walk up to the podium and say, well, you know, this should have been done by certified mail, and we should have had it hand-delivered, and it would have, you know, the Pony Express or someone should have brought it to me, or whatever it is. So we do that, and, you know, that's, that's considered best practice. Except we were sending them to a place that wasn't opening its mail. And I'm sorry for your accident, but I'll tell you a little story. In January, it'll be the fourth anniversary of my open-heart surgery. I ran a meeting the Monday before the Friday I went into surgery, and two months later, I had another meeting. Except for the five days that I was in Sutter recovering from the surgery, I was never offline. So, and I guess we could all become Solomon here and split this baby in half. But this just gets back to the things we have with the other signs. You know, we send out notifications, they get ignored, not speaking to why something got ignored. But from our perspective, it was ignored. We have no way of knowing what's going on with any person that we send stuff to, that we're engaging, unless we engage them. So the idea, I'm not particularly sympathetic to this. On the other hand, I don't want to be labeled as being anti-business in this town, which happens on a regular basis. So our position is $300 of this is hard, and $250 of it is, oh, an additional 500?
Yeah.
Ah.
300 is hard, 500 is what's subject to the appeal tonight.
Ah, thank you. Half of the 500. That's what I think. And all of the 300.
Just to clarify, the receipt that you see on the appeal form, that's the fee for filing the appeal. Is that correct, Pierre?
That is correct.
So the 550 is the appeal fee only. Yeah, just so you know.
Well, the $500, and I'll refer to the city clerk, the $500 is a deposit, and the $50 is the filing fee. So what I would assume is non-refundable. And just for full clarification, I believe there was a notice of non-compliance that was filed against the property. Typically, we do that by the time we reach the first administrative. And so by the time we have a second administrative fine, usually the property owner will contact staff after the first fine. But if we don't, then we file a notice of non-compliance. So that, that's a separate process. That's, that'll be $250 to remove that notice of non-compliance. But I want to make sure the council was aware of that additional cost that may be on this property.
So what's the total cost? See, I'm getting a 250 for a non-compliance. I've got a 100 and a 200 for the first initials that is, first initial letters that went out, which basically, we can't make a decision on that. That's done. And this is a 550 to file an appeal, $50 non-return, $500 for the appeal, and it's also a $500 fine for the third letter gone out?
So correct me if I'm wrong, Pierre, but if, if you grant the appeal and say, you know, he doesn't have to pay, that 500 of the 550, that's to cover that, the cost of the fine. That is returned to him. So if you deny the appeal, we keep the $550, and that covers the 500. Is that correct, Pierre?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. Great. Cool. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had the numbers straight in my head.
The only before you is the appeal of the $500, the third administrative fine. That's what's before you. Everything else is all costs where that ship has sailed.
Gotcha. So I just want to make sure. So he's still expected to pay above this 550, $300 from the first couple, the first two fines, and then you're saying another 250 to lift the...
Well, let's go back to what he had to pay in order to file the appeal. So filing the appeal, it's a $500 deposit, which may be returned. There's a $50 fee for holding this hearing.
Okay.
And going through the process to have this hearing.
Okay.
So what he is still obligated to pay will be the first administrative fine of $100, and then the second administrative fine of $200, for a total of $300. The $500 would have brought it up to $800 in fines. And then in addition to that, I believe there would, there should be, our normal protocol, there would have been a notice of non-compliance filed against the property. And that will be $250, if that exists, to have that cancellation filed.
Okay, so there'll be $550 for him to pay regardless of our decision?
The 250 did get filed. The notice of non-compliance did not get filed.
Okay.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay.
$300, they, he will pay.
Right.
350. So you will have the 350, because the 50 is this appeal that is the process of having the hearing.
Right.
And the 300 are the first two that are not subject to appeal. So we're really talking about the $500.
It's really $200.
Do we grant an appeal or not on that $500?
Gotcha.
And I guess I'll, I'll speak on my, I'm similar. I feel like we do this a lot where when a person comes in and pleads their case, we sort of say, okay, even though we have our rules and our staff are doing our job, we'll give you clemency, or whatever you want to call it. We tend to do that a lot, I guess, kind of for consistency's sake. And I do think, you know, thank you for coming in. And I didn't know when I read this, it said indisposed what that meant, right? So I think, you know, if there was more description related to a person's specific circumstances that made this impossible, or for whatever they want to say, still, I, you know, I'm a business owner myself. Like, you find people to cover things for you when you are having situations where you can't respond. So I guess I would be willing to grant the appeal if other folks on the council wanted to go that direction, but I'm not hardset in that position.
Yeah, I mean, I'm struggling with, we wrote refused on the envelope. So the envelope went to someone, so we're not just saying it was completely ignored. Somebody wrote refused on it who was getting the mail. I don't think this is the same as the I don't think this is the same as the sign pole things that we've been getting, where we've been getting first notices and trying to, you know, decide about sign poles. And I know quite a few people who've had to go through this, who've been very upset but have paid their fines and moved forward. So I have a hard time saying, you know, we're, we're just going to waive this, are we gonna, I mean, we might as well not have code enforcement and do this if we're not going to enforce our fines. And there's a lot of people who went through a long process, at some point, sitting through committees to decide what these ordinance would be and how those would be delivered, and so I, I don't see this as the same that we've, we've had to date. I think this is, is different than all of those, because we're talking about the fines. We're not talking about trying to save a pole sign. So like I said, I, I struggle because I, I've been getting complaints about these and other people are paying them, so I don't, I don't know how I would justify waiving this one and not trying to return everyone else's fees who've, who've paid them. That's kind of where I'm struggling with this.
Yeah, well, I'm, Mr. Monson, I'm definitely empathetic with what you had to go through. I completely understand that. You know, just basically, in short, you came here, you took care of the problem, you're actually making appeal. I mean, everybody has the right to make an appeal, whether they, you know, feel it's right or not, or if they're upset about paying it, that's your right here within the city. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about the first two. They have definitely gone past their time, it's something you're unfortunately going to have to deal with, but I would be okay with waiving the third fine and granting the appeal on that one.
You know, I'm looking at this form now, and it says, "This appeal is based upon the following grounds: excessive and unfair." I have no way of knowing if this is excessive, it's, I don't necessarily think it's unfair. I mean, this is the rules of the road. Like I said, I run a business. When I was indisposed, I made sure there were people taking care of my business so that if things happened while I was not able to do my job 100%, that it would get done. And, you know, owning this property is your business, I get, I must, I don't know what you do, but, you know, this is part of that. I don't think we let it go. I'd be willing to cut it like a little bit, like I said, we could be Solomon, but Jackie's right, I'm sorry, the mayor is right. We do hear from people that actually pay these fines, and they're no less or more happy than, than Mr. Monson here.
I'll, I'll add a little bit more, I guess. I agree with Councilman Ricci. I probably would be willing to do some sort of havesies or something on this. I do think, I mean, you go and buy, I just bought a ticket to fly to Arizona, and, you know, on that ticket, it always has, you know, I can buy insurance if I get sick or something happens, and I pay an additional fee on top of that to protect myself if I can't do it, because I don't get my money back if something happens. That's just part of doing business and how we do things in this world. So there isn't really, even for something as simple as a transaction to buy a plane ticket, that's a pretty basic thing that happens, and people make business decisions on that. You can say no, and if you get sick, well, you know, either you, you don't get your money back or it goes into, you know, they hold it until you buy another, another plane ticket. So I, I don't have, I don't think it's an excessive fine, I don't think it's unfair, because like I said, if this had been a, a letter from the IRS, I guarantee you that letter would have been opened.
Yeah.
And it would have been acted upon. I, I don't think the city government is, should be any less worthy of, of being opened, but I'm also, I'm also, you know, looking at this and trying to find a way to, as I usually do, to come to some kind of happy medium, I suppose. And so, like I said, I do think it's, it's good that the, the appellant is here to state his case and that, you know, we know a little bit more about what indisposed means. So I would be, I'd be in favor of doing a half the mayor wants to.
I want to ask a question first, because the, the item is to deny or approve, so I don't...
Yes, that's true.
I, I don't understand how...
Yeah, we'd have to put some other, yeah, we'd have to do two things.
Yes, exactly.
I think it's within your discretion to reduce the fine amount.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
So we could deny the appeal but reduce the fine amount if we chose to do so, that's...
Would we be denying the appeal?
Yeah, because we'd still be charging him a fine.
No, 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 I got that part.
Okay.
Well, you know, there's fancy words that go in. I'm sure there's...
Okay, does someone want to make a motion then?
All right, I'm going to say this. I want to, we want to deny the appeal and set the, the fine at $250 bucks. Is that adequate? Well, no, no, I'm not asking him, language-wise, yes. Does that pass the...
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 12.2. Review the Cannabis Committee Benefit Nonprofit Grant Awards and Consider Resolution Approving Additional Funding for the Grants in the Amount of $466. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In some of my review meetings, I know some of you said, well, why can't this be on consent? Well, my reason for this is simply to highlight those, those grants that were, were approved and let everyone know what the Cannabis Committee has, has done. So with that, we received 13 applications, and of those, we approved, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, I believe, five applications. Thank you, Kathy. I hadn't actually counted the number that we approved, and I just want to highlight those that were approved. Number one, the Community Pride Orcart Garden in their full amount, 75, 75, 55, which, if you don't know, that's the Orcart Garden on Highway 50 that's kind of advertising the entrance to Gulbug Mine, et cetera, the sign that's there. So that was improved, that was a, looked very nice prior to the Highway 50 project, and it has never been redone for various reasons, but this would enable them to move forward with that, that project. The second is Sierra Community Access TV, and that project is to do more special programs on historic Placerville and different things that they've done. So it's a, it's specific to historic programs that they want to do on different buildings, events, and et cetera, that have happened within Placerville, and they approved $2,000 for that, which was half of what they, they requested, 4,000. The committee approved 2,000. The Elroy County Farm Trails, this is the, the farmer's market that occurs up in the Mooney Lot on kind of Upper Main Street, actually across the, the road right here from where we are. They approved this last time, and this is to continue to assist them with marketing as, as that farmer's market tries to establish itself in that location. The next one is Images of Hope. This is to assist Images of Hope with Banners on Parade, which are the banners that you see downtown. Image of Hope sponsors those, they asked for some assistance to help continue those banners going forward. And then the last one's Marshall Cares. Marshall Cares is a program that, I should have brought the exact language with me, but they assist people in need with medical assistance and et cetera that, that need that. And they needed a new computer, new computer workstation to keep that program running. So those are the six grants that were approved by the committee. As they did this, they actually went a little bit over their $15,000 that they had allocated, and the council approved back in May for this, for these grants, but they do have an available balance of about $2,450, and they requested that the council allocate an additional $466 to cover the cost of all of the grants that they would like to award at this time. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council?
I was actually just going to ask if Kathy from Community, for Community Pride wouldn't mind just giving a synopsis of what the, the $7,000 was worth. Sounds, I'm sure it's a great project, but it'd be great for the public to hear the rest of it.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. So when that project was removed, Community Pride received mitigation money from Caltrans. And so for that particular project, we have $7,000 in a city account. And I have been waiting to, for, originally Steve Yule said we wouldn't do that project till the Monument Garden was done. And then I've been waiting for Carrie Fryer, who's the one that designed and built the Monument Garden, to give me a design for the Orcart Garden, and I'm thrilled recently. And I think it had to do with the deadline for the grant application that, so we have a, we have a plan for it, and Carrie would be the one that would implement the plan. And anyway, it's going to be wonderful, and it's, it's about time, and I feel really bad how long it's been that, that that has been sitting, waiting for funding. If there's any additional funding, I have an idea for applying, I mean, for a grant from another organization. And I would like to say also, I love the Banners on Parade, and I know I've said this before, and I don't feel that they need to have advertising on the back for an organization because nowhere else in town do we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions from the council? No? Okay, we will open this up to public comment.
These all sound like very good things to support, and I am wondering, the Cannabis Committee in the past has allocated in their budget, without having to do a grant, $5,000 for the city, for the Placerville Fire Safe Council. Is that still in effect?
Yes, that was actually allocated as part of what the council did back in May, so that, that exists for the, this, this year. So yes.
I got a question from people on the Fire Safe Council saying, are we in there? Do we need to file it?
Yeah.
So I got it. It's there.
Yeah, they actually did that funding outside of this grant amount, so...
That was my understanding, so I just wanted to clear that. This sounds like great, great allocations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to 12.3. Consider changing the term of the mayor from one-year terms to two-year terms. And before I hand that off to the city manager, I called it, so I will say a few things first. First of all, I want everyone to understand, I'm not asking that for my term. This is, this is, yeah. And also, we, I, we had to agendize this in order to be able to talk about it. So it, it was the only way for us to, to be able to talk about it, and when I had asked staff, they weren't sure about the paperwork, so by directing them, we got all the answers we needed to, to have this discussion. And so I thought this would be an appropriate time to bring it up for me, first of all, not asking for it for myself, but also the timing in the council cycles, because obviously, if the, the vice mayor were mayor, then he would be mayor for two years, and then he would potentially be off the council, so you don't want to overlap that, that timing. And so that's kind of why I brought it up with the timing, as well as the fact that, as most of you know, we have two new department heads, and next year, we will be getting two more new department heads, because we have a couple people retiring out, in addition to our city manager, who will be retiring out. And so that's, it's a lot of changes in our upper management, and I just thought this might be a good time for us to consider a little more stability and longevity with that. My understanding is, we used to do this, and then I wasn't part of that when we didn't use to do this. I think there's a mayor, former mayor in the audience who could explain that more if you wanted. But the good news is, the paperwork that came back says, we don't actually have to change anything to make that decision, and so people could think about this before January came and, and decide it. But I wanted to be able to have this discussion, because that day that you decide that isn't always the best time to have that discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this was a little bit of an interesting one, and found some interesting information, and I will say, former mayor Kathy Lishman, I traded a few emails back and forth, and she was helpful in kind of seeing where this went. I, I have to admit that I don't know exactly what happened when this change was made, but I, I believe, and who knows, Kathy may be able to shed some light on that when we talk about it. So the request came at your ask council meeting for staff to consider, bring back report to look at how we might, if we wanted to change the mayor's term from one-year to two-year, how we might do that. And that was interesting, because I then went, as I should do, go to the municipal code to say, okay, what do we need to change to do this? And our municipal code actually says, the council shall meet on the Tuesday after the general municipal election and choose one of its members as mayor, which the general municipal election happens every two years. So that tells me that we should have a, the code says we have a two-year mayor. The government code also has a section that talks about this, and it also has the same language, however, something that was added, and I forget the year, that was added to that, and we took action, I think it was in 2006?
Six.
Yeah. That said that it will occur at the Tuesday following the meeting that the declaration of the election is made. So those are two different things. So for example, we normally declare the results December, the first meeting in December, the next meeting would be our first meeting in January. So that's how that has happened, and why that has occurred in that manner. That's a little bit different than what our election or our municipal code says, but that's what, the pattern that we have been following, which is in the government code. Up until 1996, they were doing two-year terms. In 1996, it changed to a one-year term. There was no documentation in terms of, obviously, the zoning code, or the municipal code was not changed, and we could not find anything in terms of a resolution that made that change either. So as far as we can tell, it was simply done by council minute action in the meeting. Some of the information, and this is just speculation, I have to note this upfront, that perhaps it may have been for that reason of, if you look at, if you change to a two-year term, there's the possibility that somebody that's on a four-year term, one of the three, when we have three members, will not have an opportunity to be mayor. I'm not saying you have to have that opportunity, but it appears that maybe that was the reasoning for changing and going to a one-year term at that time. I think maybe there were a couple of people that both wanted to be mayor, and the only way that could happen is if they went to a one-year term. So that's kind of the explanation of how that got started. Again, if you wanted to go to the two-year term, you could. The other question, and I'm going to ask Andreas to speak to this if he can, the question came up, can you do a one-year? Based on our municipal code and the government code, can you do a one-year mayor? Or have we doing it, been doing it wrong, and we have to go to the two-year? Although there's not clear language, there's been no court decisions or anything regarding that, it appears there is in another area of the code, there's a section that gives you some pretty broad language of how you do that, and I think what Andreas told me, yes, we believe you could do, although there's no clear-cut code or court cases that say that you could do a one-year term. And I will say that I've been in other cities, a couple of them, who also do one-year terms, so it's not necessarily unusual. I think Andreas said that there are other cities that do that also that they work with. So I don't know if you want to add to that anything, Andreas?
I think Cleve covered it pretty well. The government code section that talks about doing it after the general municipal election, that was clarified about 20 years ago to make it clear that it had to happen after the general municipal election rather than just after an election, because up until that point, there was a line of thinking that every time you had an election in a jurisdiction, you had to then repick your mayor. So even if you had a ballot initiative on a special election, the way that section was previously phrased suggested that you had to then repick your mayor, because the... was previously phrased suggested that you had to then repick your mayor because the section suggested, after you have an election, you have to pick a mayor. Because that was kind of a nonsensical interpretation, they made this clarification. But as Cleve said, there's another government code section along that same chunk of regulations regarding city councils that says, the city council has the discretion to adopt policies on how it conducts meetings. And so we read that pretty broadly to include if you want to have a policy of switching your mayor once a year, as long as you're picking a mayor after the general municipal election in line with the government code, there's nothing stopping you from doing it again a year later.
Great. Thank you.
Just a couple more things. I need to go back and correct myself. The government code language says that you will select the mayor at the same meeting where the declaration of election is done. So technically, we should do that at the December 10th meeting. Now, I don't know, Andreas, if there's any flexibility to that. We'd normally like to wait until the January meeting because it gives time for the new members seated to think about that and figure out who they, you know, want to put in as mayor and vice mayor. So I'll just throw that out. I don't know if that's an option to them or not.
I think theoretically, you could put it on the agenda for that meeting and then continue the item after some initial discussion.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. So you could do it that way. We should schedule it for the first meeting in December, but you could continue it to the next meeting, and then you've met that requirement, I think. So, yeah. The other thing, just interesting thing, as you see the, I thought was interesting, as I went through the list of mayors going all the way back to 1863, that is in our, in this, an attachment to the staff report. Thank you for Regina for getting this to me, and she keeps that updated and current. So just an interesting document to look at, the names and those that have served clear back to the beginning of the city. Any questions, myself or Andreas will try to answer those for you.
Does that mean for the first nine years we were incorporated, we didn't have a mayor?
I don't know. I can't answer that.
We talked about this in the agenda review. The city council disbanded in 1873 for 20, what, 28 years? I mean, obviously, there was still a city here running. I am curious about that period of time. All you historic buffs out there, I think you should dig into this and find out what was going on in Placerville.
What is that, signing sendai?
Yes, the city manager seized power. Anyway, and you'll notice too, that starting, it appears, starting in 1908 with John F. Limpenzell. Four-year. They went to four years for a while, and then it went back to two, like for like a few terms.
And we don't know, it could have been two, two-year terms.
Yeah, but then that would have meant that he did it, and the next guy did it, and the next guy.
Yeah, they were full four-year terms for about, what?
Yeah, so in any event, obviously, we've done it all sorts of different ways.
And then Carl served two consecutive terms from 84 to 88.
Yeah. All right. Anyway, so I just brought this up for discussion, so we can talk about it, or you can wait to talk about it, obviously, with the way the paperwork does, but do we have more conversation before we want to open it to public?
I will just state that my other favoriteest city in California not named Placerville is Susanville, and they have a two-year mayor. Though a number of our compatriots up and down the golden chain have one. I did a little digging. But then there's others that have two, and it has its pluses and minuses.
Yeah, I was just going to say similar. I work with a ton of cities across California and others, Nevada too. And it runs the gamut. I mean, it's one-year, it's two-year, there's directly elected mayors, depending on, generally bigger cities, but even a couple of smaller cities in the Central Valley, for whatever reason, have directly elected mayors, which I find strange. So it, you know, it's all over. I mean, I think the, as John said, Councilmember Clarici, there's pluses and minuses. I think that one of the pluses is the continuity, as the mayor referred to, especially as we go through some changes at the city level with staff and having some level of continuity. And I will say, as being mayor twice, you know, there's issues that you just work on with staff because you're the first person that they go to when it's the council relations is the mayor. Certainly, they can go to anyone else as well, but you do end up working on projects a little closer with staff when you serve in that in that role as mayor for a year. And there would definitely be some positives to continuing in that role for things that go beyond the term. On the other hand, you know, you want other people to have their chance to serve in that role if they want to as well, so. But I certainly could have seen some things that, you know, that would have worked in that way. It's also, it's a lot of work for two years too. So that's the other thing that somebody has to take into account is, I know you don't, like, it's not seen from the public perspective, from ECIS, you know, on the dais, and maybe at events sometimes, but because you are that person that the city manager goes to as the face and the representative of city council, it does, you know, add definitely more hours to your to your job as a representative. So it's something for all of us to contemplate as we look at something like that too, is do we have the bandwidth to do it for that many years? Like for myself, there was no way I could have been mayor again for two years and service chair of Secog. It's just, it would have been impossible and run, do a job, if I was retired, maybe, but, and even then, it would have been really tough. So, you know, you have to, and, you know, I dropped off a couple of things myself, other boards, just so I had enough time to do what I had to do, so.
Right. Plus you have, you're the person who usually attends all the events and you field all the call, you know, the emails from the public, so it is quite a bit more work. Your button was pushed first, so Councilmember Gottberg?
So I definitely think there's some benefits to continuity as stated, but I also think, you know, the mayor is a little bit more public-facing and having the diversity of the council represented in that role, forward-facing to the public, can shape perceptions. So I do think there's definitely a benefit of having, you know, people of different ages, genders, races, political ideologies, religion across the board, sort of being in that front-facing role because they are the person at events and, you know, kind of interacting a bit more, not that we all interact with the public, but a little bit more seen by the public. So I do think it can shape, at least for some folks, their perception of the city. And by going to a two-year term, you sort of lose, whatever the diversity of the council is, you sort of lose that representation because you're picking one person, you know, to serve for two years, another person. So most of us will never, if we only serve a four-year term, most of us will never end up being in the mayor position. So I do think that's something to consider. I would just say, from myself, I do get constituents that are very excited about the possibility of Placerville having its first LGBTQ mayor. If we went to a two-year term, I would never serve in that role, so it would not be me. So just like, I don't personally care to serve in that role necessarily from a, like, I need to do the job or whatever, but I do think that we should consider that implication of less diversity and representation if we go to a two-year term. And I would love to hear the public's comments on that, so I'd sort of making those now so that folks can let me know if they think that's important or not to them.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Yarborough?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, we all have some really good points here. I mean, Councilmember Saragosa, with, you know, two years, that's a lot of work for somebody. But at the same time, I agree with Nicole. One of the things that when I first got onto the council, I thought it was really cool was like, okay, well, wait a minute, it's like, pretty much if you're in a four-year term, you got a really good chance that you're either going to be a mayor or at least vice mayor, get exposed to that experience and, you know, have that, you know, I don't know, your back pocket if you're going to rerun or not, or even if you don't rerun, you know, it's quite the experience for the person that gets to fill that position. So, I mean, one way or the other, I mean, I think it's, you know, it really doesn't matter to me, it's two-year or one-year, but I would probably lean more towards the one-year just because it gives, like Nicole said, everybody, you know, the chance to see everybody that's up here be in that position and see a bigger diversity for the city itself, so.
Great. We'll open this for public comment.
Good evening, Ryan Carter, City of Placerville. I also found that list of mayors to be fascinating, and I would love to find out what the problem with the railroad was, that they dissolved the, I'm interested to find that out, I hope somebody knows. My opinion on this is that, you know, the mayor is a largely ceremonial role. I know that there is more front-facing, you know, you get to do some events, you get to experience some more interaction with the public. I think it is beneficial for us to see it rotate through you guys on a one-year basis. I would recommend keeping it that way. You have the option, if there is a lot of staff upheaval, you can just appoint the same person for a second year, you have that option right now. So don't take away the option of having the one-year, you can still keep a two-year mayor if you want, just appoint somebody two years in a row, it's doable. So, yeah, just, I'm glad to hear that there's not an ordinance amendment that's necessary to make that happen, just keep it the way it is, keep one-year terms and let people enjoy the experience of being mayor in the City of Placerville. Thank you.
Good evening, Kirk Smith. I just want to echo the comments of Councilmember Gottberg, because all of you, what's really nice about the current composition is you each provide a lot of diversity, different backgrounds, different experiences. And that kind of rotation system is used for a lot of communities for their judges. Trial judges will go from civil, criminal, probate, and the like. And what they find is that each time a judge goes on to a new assignment, they'll bring to that experience things they've learned from the last assignment. And it says cross-fertilization is very healthy. I think the only argument, if I heard correctly, for having this change was that you had a lot of staff changes come at major department changes. But that's all the more reason to have many of you involved actively in that process. The more they're involved in that area, the better. And I'm sure you can come up with a system where you could increase your efficiencies in that process. I think there's another thing to consider, that two of you have experience with the roundabout issue. And that, you know, and Measure K and the like, and that's going to be coming up again. It didn't come up during an election year, but likely during the next two years. And if so, you'd want to have a strong circus master, ringmaster, and control, strong leadership. But I can't really think of any reason why we really need to have the change. I just didn't see it in the material. John Driscoll didn't address it adequately a long time ago. I think what you've got, works don't break it. Thank you.
I almost feel like you talked yourself into it, then you talked yourselves out of it. If someone, the history of how this happened, happened in 1996. Barry Wasserman was mayor from 94 to 96. John Nowinski and Trent Saxton wanted to each be mayor, and those were the last two years of their terms. They ran for one term, but they wanted to each be mayor, so they changed it. I was on the council at the time. I wondered on this chart why it said, it said 2002 to 2003 for people, and then it started doing 2006 to 2006. Seems like it would have been to 2007, but I don't want to waste my time talking about that because I have some thoughts. I think if someone only wants to serve one term on the council, then they could think about not being mayor. It's not a chair, it's a mayor. The mayor has no special powers, but the mayor does have some extra responsibilities. As far as interacting with the public, every council member interacts with the public. You can go to all kinds of events, you don't have to be the mayor to do that. It's hard right now because it affects each of you. But if if someone ran two terms, then they have a good chance of being mayor. I think it's called mayor, not chair, and therefore I feel, and I've said this many times in the past, that I thought the two terms, two years was better. And I think the continuity actually serves the public better. One option could be for whoever gets the most votes in this next election is the mayor in two years for two years. And whoever gets the most votes in the last election would be the mayor for two years coming up. That's a way to serve the public, based on how the public votes. So I, and because Placerville is a general law city, not a charter city, that's why the mayor isn't elected by the public. But I think honoring the public by saying, whoever gets the most votes in this election is the mayor in two years. It's just one way of looking at it. But I do think that if you are on the council more than one term, then you have a good chance of being mayor for two years. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have one quick clarification on that. Non-charter cities can have elected mayors, but that's something that would have to be put to the voters.
So would you be, would you be technically having an elected mayor if you said the number-one vote-getter could be the mayor? If you had that stipulation?
If you have that kind of a provision, that's not an elected mayor. Elected mayor is a.
Literally runs for mayor.
Yes, runs for mayor, runs for two years.
Sue Rodman, I'm with the idea of if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I like our one-year, I like getting a diversity of people being the mayor. Everybody brings their own talents, and I've seen Mayor Clarici, I've seen Jackie, I've seen Mayor Saragosa be a mayor, and I've seen a couple of other people do mayor job too, and they've all done well. And I don't think it's necessary to go for two years. I think that that's a pretty heavy load to pull, and maybe we don't need to do that. I think our system is working. So if it ain't broke, let's not fix it.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring it back. I want to say that I am lucky to serve with such a good council. I wouldn't have any concerns about anyone on this council, but I will say that there have been councils in the past where they haven't done a great job, and it is a greater burden to the rest of the council when someone isn't pulling their weight and isn't doing a good job in general. So it hasn't always worked well. If they've hid that from the public, good for those councils. But I personally don't think we need to do anything. When I first brought it up, I thought there were codes we needed to discuss, but it doesn't seem we need to discuss the codes, and the council can decide moving forward each year whether they want to reelect the same person, have a new person. So that would be my recommendation.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is, Davis does the whole top vote-getter thing. In my lifetime in town, a couple of people that got the most votes, no. No, should have never been the mayor, and no. I think we should still leave it up to us to decide who those people are. It's a little too random in a small city like this, and you get votes, and no. That's my only no. Other than that, I'm fine. You know, the mayor is a fun job. I had it, and I enjoyed the heck out of it. You represent the city. Yeah, you sign some papers and you do stuff, but you represent the city, and it puts you in a different category of people. I was in a meeting with the guy that was the mayor of LA, had the two.
Viragosa?
Viragosa. And we're all, it was a water, it was about water. He was running for governor at the time, and he was sitting right next to me, right there. And they went that way, so we all got to introduce ourselves. And I was, my consulting work, so I was consulting, I was working with the Friant Water Authority at the time. And I said, hi, I'm John, I'm Friant Water Authority, blah, blah, blah. And I said, oh, and by the way, me and this guy have something in common. And he goes, well, what? I said, we have both been mayors. And I said, I was the mayor of Placerville for one year. And then afterward, in the middle, so he's talking and talking, he goes, John knows, and the guy was the mayor of LA, I mean, John and I, he knows, John knows what I'm talking about because he was a mayor once. And I was like going, yeah, all right, that was good. Anyway, it's a, it's a, it's a, it, I don't want to say prestigious, I don't want to make it sound like that. It is an honor to have the job. You do represent the city. And with that comes just a little bit more juice, you know? When you go into a room, you're thinking a little bit about that. So, and you go out, you represent the city out in the world, which is very important. You are the biggest booster of Placerville in some rooms when you are the mayor. Anyway, I thought I would add that. Anyway, I thought I would add that.
Okay, anyone else?
Can I throw a clarification out there? If the direction is to stick with one-year terms, I would recommend the direction to staff be bringing forward an ordinance to memorialize that in the city's code.
I, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, Mayor. I was gonna say, I actually, I think, I like kind of, if what we have today is the discretion to do somebody for two years, because it makes sense, we love them, whatever, they've been the great mayor. And so I liked, I would rather retain the ability to appoint somebody to a, to your, to a second term, as opposed to just codifying that we were only going to do one-year terms. That would be my preference.
My understanding with the way we have it currently is, we can decide that on a year-by-year basis, whether we want to reelect that same mayor or not, and so by leaving it the way it is right now...
But by leaving it the way you have it right now, you're supposed to be picking every two years. So we've just not been doing that.
So we haven't been doing it right for the last...
It would be bringing it back every year to decide if we continue the person's term or not.
Gotcha, we've been out of compliance for a very long time.
Clarifying that in the city's code would be my recommendation.
That once a year, after the general election, and then once a year thereafter, we will consider our mayor appointments, and we might put somebody in there for...
Gotcha.
Right? That's...
Correct.
Reconsider, but we could reappoint the same person if we chose to.
You could reappoint to make it a two-year term.
We've been out of compliance for 28 years.
Exactly.
And it was, and it's all because two people... Kathy knows what I'm talking about. Two people had to be the mayor, and that's when it all got messed up. Andreas, that's interesting, though. I mean, because is that specific to us, that language, with those, with the two stats, the two, I know those are two government code sections, because, I mean, lots of cities, have other cities just amended their rules in order to do that? Because, I mean, so many cities do a one-year mayor.
So the government code section in your staff report applies to all general law cities throughout the state? Some cities who have one-year terms have no real formal place where they've memorialized that. Others have it in their municipal code, some have it as an adopted policy.
It's like, now that we know. Okay, that's, that's what I was getting to, is like, it sounds like most cities are probably out of...
We, right now, in Placerville, have a municipal code section that says, "We're doing it after the general municipal election." So by that, we're saying, "We're doing it every two years."
Gotcha.
We just haven't been doing it every two years.
Got it. Thank you.
I guess, I would like us to still be able to do one-year terms and not be required to do two-year terms.
I agree, and I'm also wondering if we need to clean up the language where we actually are doing this in January instead of December. So if we're going to clean it all up, let's clean it all up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so the way we'd have to clean it up to be in compliance with the government code section would be to have this election be made at the meeting where the election, the general municipal election is certified.
Swear it in, and then we do it right after swearing in.
Don't we do that now?
But, no, we, we do it...
Every year, but we do it every two years as well. And then we do it in between as well. We're double-doing it.
You're right, because we don't have an election every year, so you're not doing it after the election.
And then we would also add in...
You're doing it more than you should.
Yeah, we're not doing it in the odd years.
So what I think that we should, if you want, and I'm here, and stay with the one-year, let us go back and research that, because I need to talk, I think Andreas and I need to talk about that, because if you're saying you're going to go to one year based on that current language that's in the government code, well, that says two years.
Well, because you have a...
So how do you do that? But we looked at another section, Andreas found another section that may allow, that he thinks gives us the authority to do...
For even-numbered, even-numbered years, we'd be doing under that government code section, and then for odd-numbered years, we'd be using the other government code section that gives us the discretion to come up with policies. And so the cleaned-up ordinance would say something along the lines of, in even-numbered years, after general municipal elections, the council shall select the mayor at the same meeting at which the elections, the results are certified. In odd-numbered years, the council shall select a mayor at a December or January meeting.
But then we could, but then we could continue the item...
To January.
To January, so that we...
Correct. And at any time, a mayor could resign from that position, and the council would be forced to pick a new mayor anyway.
We would all be aligned in the universe.
I don't understand why we can't push that decision to January if we know that we want to do it in January.
Because the government code calls for you to do it at that...
Gotcha. Okay, because...
I think that's on the basis of, if you're, say you're, basically, your vice mayor and your mayor both turned over, and you had no one to...
Yeah.
...manage that meeting after the swearing, and I think that's what it's based on, right?
I just was also thinking about, the mayor usually does the state of the city at that first meeting in January before it turns over, and so just considering how, all the little things that we, we do that maybe we haven't been doing right.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to start having the state of the city in December.
We have not been, we have not been doing them legally.
So generally, we're getting the sense you'd like to have the ability to do one-year terms, the flexibility to extend somebody's one-year term into a second year. And so with that, I would suggest the direction be that we bring forward an ordinance at a future meeting, put some language around that.
Great.
I move that we bring forward an ordinance per our city attorney's statement.
Recommendations?
Recommendations, yes. To have, continue to have the option to do one-year terms.
I will second that. Can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Coricchi?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you, thank you for that discussion.
Okay, that was fun.
Yeah. Okay, which brings us to 12.4. Receive a presentation on the proposed last-mile grant CPUC recommendations and consider an RFQ for Internet service providers and broadband fiber program. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to make this real quick. We have two purposes here for doing this. One is, as mentioned, the second half is to authorize us to release the RFQ for Internet service providers, to Internet service providers. The other part is to allow Mr. McCarger, my senior management analyst, to do this report on what we did when we got this $20 million grant from the state. And the purpose of that, too, is to start getting this information out. We need to get this out to our citizens, to our public, to let them know this is coming, because as you will see, the $20 million pays to bring the service to a select group of unserved citizens in our community. We hope to expand greatly on that and be able to offer that to the entire city. That's what the plan is. So this is kind of a first step in helping us get that word out. There will be much more coming, but we need to start immediately, as we mentioned, this Thursday, and Steve will mention this, this Thursday is when the CPUC should approve the grant, is what we're expecting. So we'll, we need to be ready to hit the ground running. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Steve to do the presentation.
Good evening. We'll try to make this real quick, as we talked about. What I wanted to do is just update you on exactly where we are in terms of the grant, what that grant means to us, and what our future looks like if we are able to get this broadband project aligned into the city. So tonight, we're just going to talk about what the last-mile federal funding grant actually was, and how we qualified for that, the scope of the award. We're going to talk about the next steps, what we want to see for the entire city, and answer any questions that you might have. So first of all, what is the last-mile grant program? It was a part of a Senate Bill 156, which was signed into law by Governor Newsom back in July of 2021. It was to invest $6 billion into broadband infrastructure for middle-mile and last-mile projects. The grant we're talking about specifically is for the last mile. And it's, again, like Cleve had mentioned, it's designed very specifically to provide service to the unserved and unserved communities with broadband service. It was a very competitive application process. There were over 484 applications with worth about $463 billion. Unfortunately, the state only had $2 billion to be able to disperse. So again, very competitive process. Took about eight, nine months to prepare the application, and it was submitted in September of '23, and we just received the award recommendation at the end of August. And what will happen is that in two days, on Thursday, the 26th, the official CPUC commission is going to make their final acknowledgement and grant the award officially. So fingers still crossed on that, but, yeah, it was for $20,198,943, which is actually pretty darn good. I'm proud of that. And in essence, what that does is that covers a small section, but it's a very critical section for our overall plan. So what does that grant pay for? This is just a real quick overlying, overhead view of what this grant is specifically to provide. It's 39 and a half miles of fiber. It's got 264 unserved addresses. This is all based on the data that was provided by the state. That equates to about 469 units, and about 2,100 actual people within the city can benefit from that. So what is a long-term goal? Our goal is to take that amount, that amount of that grant actually covers about 69% of the total network within the city. So that's a real heck of a good head start, and this is what we'd eventually love to be able to get to, and this is the entire city map. We have the plan, because the lot of grant that we had received, we, and this is also a big part about why we received this grant, is because we've been able to get the work done ahead of time in terms of the design. So the design is just about all but completed at this point. And this is, instead of the 49 miles, it's 142 miles of fiber, and it's going to serve 5,832 locations. And a location is not necessarily each unit, there's, there's multiple units within that, but that's what we want to do. So what are the next steps? We have a lot of them. We have a lot to accomplish. Again, all of this is going to be at the council's approval and consent, but right now, we're going to wait to get the grant and find out specifically, what are the terms of that grant? They have some specific timelines, they thought. They were saying that they wanted 18 months to have this completed project done, and we're going to have to wait and see what they actually say, because that's a very aggressive timeline. What we want to do tonight is get your approval to send out an RFQ to various Internet service providers, and that's to provide, and to get feedback from the top providers, what kind of service levels they can provide, the pricing, what kind of marketing efforts they want to do, and are they going to be able to help us obtain commitments from individual residents? And that's going to be very important, because it's, the take rate is everything, you know? So we're going to need to really push on that. So we want to give some competitive advantage to maybe two of the top ISPs, at least in the initial phases, to be able to get this thing built out. So we're going to have to obtain service contracts with consultants, we're going through the process of financial evaluations. What is the estimated cost of subscribers using different models that we have available to us? We're going to meet with the city's financial planner, determine most feasible options, and we'll make all these presentations to you once we have that information. We have to develop RFPs for constructions and build, develop ongoing operational agreements. So in the days ahead, the key thing, again, is to get that highest possible take rate. So we want to generate a lot of community excitement and anticipation about this, and we're going to need to share our vision, what, what it means. What does it mean to have a fiber broadband network within the city? We're going to do that with some flyers, we'll have some town hall meetings, and we need everyone's help to spread the word. So we want to make sure you talk to your neighbors, talk to any of the businesses that you know of, and just really get people invested in this whole process. So how will it work? I've got a very, very short video here about how the system works. I'll play that for you, and then we'll talk about a couple other things.
A customer on an automated open access network can switch their Internet service provider in less than 60 seconds, because the service provider has been moved to the cloud. What does this process look like for the consumer? From the subscriber portal, a customer can view all available ISPs and service plan options. To subscribe to an ISP service, a customer simply clicks on the Internet service category and is presented with the available companies and service plans. Once the customer selects and subscribes to the plan they want, an ISP network connection is automatically created, and within seconds, their Internet services are configured. The customer's dashboard displays the subscription information, and the customer can now access the Internet. If at any time the ISP does not deliver the quality or reliability the customer expects, they can simply access the subscriber portal, cancel their service, and go through the subscription process to select a new ISP. To cancel or unsubscribe to their existing service, the customer simply clicks unsubscribe, and the system automatically disconnects their service. The customer can then go through the subscription process with a different ISP, and in a matter of seconds, a new broadband network is established with a new provider. Returning to the customer's dashboard, it now shows they are subscribed to the new ISP.
So that's what the automated network is going to mean, and it's open access, which means you'll have multiple customers being able to choose whichever providers they want to take. If you have any updates, information, you can always go to, we've got, I've got a website, connectplacerville.com, and I'll give you some information, give you that video, among others, about why the open access network, and we'll keep you guys updated on everything that's happening. So with that, do you have any questions that I can answer for you right now?
Questions from the council? Go ahead. Councilmember Saragosa?
All right. Well, first, Steve, thank you for the presentation, that was awesome. So that was a great presentation, and I think a really good, simple way for all of us to understand it, as well as the public. I know how much work went into it as well, so I want to thank you and everyone else for the work that went into it. This is a huge game changer for the city, so, and this is the first step in that process. I noticed you said we were going to do town halls and then flyers to try to get the word out and do things. Are we going to do any social as well, a digital type of ads, too, I hope? Because if not, I think we should probably try to scrounge up a couple of dollars to do that, since this is about ISP and broadband, so we need to, we need to be on the...
I could have listed a million different things.
Gotcha, got it.
I just thought we'd just get the high points, so...
Got it.
Yes, we will hit all of that to try to get maximum exposure, because again, that's going to be critical, that, that everybody that has a vested interest in this needs to share that information out and get people excited to say, "Hey, when am I next?"
Gotcha. Then my second ques, thank you. My second question is, for the, when we go out to look at the ISPs, are you, are you thinking these are going to be like the big dogs, like AT&amp;T and Verizon, or is this also going to be like smaller type of, I don't know, Mob and Pops, for lack of a better term, other ISPs that we're not even aware of?
There are actually dozens and dozens of small ISPs that are in no way connected to the AT&amp;Ts or the Comcast. And because of the technology today, they can hook into our network, and they can provide the service. So what they're going to do is they're going to provide the pricing that they want to provide, and customers will have the option to choose, "Do I want to get gig service, the fastest possible speeds, or maybe I'll pay a little bit less for lower service? We're even going to have a plan that's much lower speed, of course, but that's for free." So you have a whole range of different options. The idea of an open access network is to provide competition and to provide value and keep those prices down without the monopoly of the bigger companies.
Great. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Any questions from the council? Thank you for that presentation. This is super exciting for us. We'll take questions from the public. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. Do we have any more discussion? If not, a motion? You have four options. Approve the RFQ outlined, approve with modifications, do not approve, take other action.
I'll approve the RFQ as outlined and move it.
I'll second.
Okay, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item 12.5. Consider approving an additional one FTE associate civil engineer position and approving a 600, or 60,000 budget appropriation and additional general fund engineering fee revenue for said position. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor No, and city council members. The item before you this evening presents staff recommendation to approve an additional full-time associate civil engineer position. The engineering department provides professional engineering services to manage and identify the city's infrastructure needs, including maintenance, rehab, and expansion of the city's water distribution system, sewer collection and treatment systems, storm drainage systems, and roadway network. The engineering department is currently managing a backlog of 120 capital improvement program projects, providing plan review and permit processing for developer-funded projects, and is responsible for processing and inspecting the city's encroachment permits for private work in the city right-of-way. The engineering department is also responsible for inner department, inner departmental support services, including GIS and mapping services, storm and wastewater permit compliance, engineering and traffic services and speed surveys, and other engineering support services on city facility projects. Currently, the engineering department is comprised of a city engineer, one senior engineer, one assistant engineer, an engineering specialist, and one admin assistant who is shared with Public Works. Over the last few years, the city has been very successful in securing state and federal grant funding for large transportation projects, and as a result, our workload has continued to increase exponentially. The engineering department currently has a backlog of work that far exceeds the capacity of our current staffing, and despite our best efforts, if something does not change, it will come at the cost of accuracy, inability to meet project deadlines, or failure to deliver projects. In the next two years, staff has prioritized nine CIP projects that will begin construction from now until the summer of 2026. With the cost of these construction projects is totaling about 40 million, 42 million dollars. Three of these projects are solely funded by local funds like Measure H and L, and the other six have a combination of federal, state, and local funds. Most notably in the list is the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Phase One project, which has active transportation program funding for construction. ATP is one of the most stringent programs in terms of timely use of funds requirements, and this project must be delivered in the required timeframe. Staff intends to deliver the Placerville Drive Bridge Replacement Project concurrently with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities projects. Both projects sit within the same project limits, and so it would be most efficient to build the improvements together under one contract. As currently programmed, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities project must begin construction in 2026, and so completing these projects in a timely manner has been identified as the number one priority for the engineering department. While the two Placerville Drive projects are in construction, it will require a significant amount of time and resources from city staff to ensure the proper management of a construction contract of this magnitude. For reference, this contract, estimated at more than $30 million, will be three times greater than the Western Placerville Interchanges Phase Two project, which is currently the largest transportation project delivered by the city of Placerville. Even with the help of a consultant construction management team, engineering staff must still be involved in day-to-day decision-making, providing final approvals on field directives and construction contract change orders, general oversight to provide and ensure compliance with the funding and ensure that all city processes are followed. Beyond those first two years, there are other federal and state-funded large transportation projects that are also planned for construction in the next four to six years. Those include Canal Street, the US-50 Triptogreen project, and the Western Placerville Interchanges Phase 2.3 project, which is the westbound off-ramp. So during Placerville Drive construction, we are going to have to have staff dedicated to ensuring the timely delivery of other large transportation projects that are in design. But most importantly, we want to ensure that we can continue moving forward with the locally funded maintenance projects. Right now, with only two licensed civil engineers, we are concerned that if we can only prioritize these large transportation projects, the schedule of other locally funded projects will slip. Right now, we currently have planned for construction within the next two years, the Smith Flat Road paving project, Thompson Way, Sherman Street, and Sheridan Street paving projects, and the Mallard Lane maintenance projects. In the next three to five years, we have planned for construction, the sewer relocation from Clay to Locust, Upper Main Street maintenance projects. We have other projects that will moving up, be moving up the priorities list through the design phase to construction, like the Clark Street utilities and paving, B Street maintenance project, and Acacia Way sewer project, just to name a few. I want to make sure that all of these important paving and utility projects become and stay priorities. And in order to do that, we need help. In addition to these large CIP projects, staff will also be involved in the broadband project that they just discussed, and we also have many development projects that are underway as well. In the fiscal year 2324, the engineering department had a second senior civil engineer position that became vacant during the recruitment of the city engineer position. That was my old position. As a stop cap measure to help balance the fiscal year 2425 budget, the vacant position was abolished, so I've effectively been wearing two hats since then. Staff is recommending the approval of one full-time employee associate civil engineer position to help support the current workload. Staff currently projects that the city will generate $60,000 in additional general fund engineering fee revenues in the 2425 year, which will offset the $19,537 projected cost for the position for the remainder of the fiscal year. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilmember Saragosa?
Thank you for the report, and I mean, out of everything that we've talked about, a lot of important things, but man, is this important. This is like, and thank you for providing the list, because I think that just puts into perspective, you know, everything that we're looking at, and that immediately, both now, in the near future, and then in a couple of out-years as well. I think we've all talked about this one way or another since the last budget, since our budget time, knowing how important it is to, to refill this or to fill a role. My only question in all this, because it's, to me, it's a no-brainer, is can we find somebody for the price that we're putting out there? I'm just worried that it, it's a low, I mean, it's a lower amount, and I know other cities have problems filling even higher level positions. Can we find some? I hope we do. I mean, I want, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not setting expectations that can't be filled at, at this fiscal amount.
I hope so.
Okay, that's honest.
Yeah, I mean, it will be a struggle. We did have the position open for a while, and we had a hard time receiving qualified applicants, but it is my hope that we will find the right person. You just never know when that right person's going to walk in the door.
Understood. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we will open this for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L. And I think our engineering has done, our engineering department has done an amazing job. And to me, it's obvious with these really big projects coming on, they're going to need some help. And if we don't give it to them, then the things that are going to fall to the wayside will be those local projects that we really need to do, but aren't the big ones. And we really do need to do those, too. I drove on, on our, our road that goes to, yeah, give me some help, our high priority road that's falling apart going up to, up the canyon.
Bedford?
No, not Bedford. Comes off of.
I don't, B Street?
No, I'm thinking of where the Sierra Symphony played up at, uh, yeah. Anyway, goes along the other creek besides, I mean, we've got Cedar Ave, and that's a mess, but this one is worse. Smith Flat Road, yes, Smith Flat Road. And I drove up Smith Flat Road all the way from where it comes off of Broadway, up to the Smith Flat House where the Sierra Symphony played this last Sunday. And you would think this was a real axle, you would almost think this is an off-road vehicle road, and it is in the middle of Placerville. And it's been waiting for I don't know how many years for us to do something with it, but those are the kinds of things. And the other thing is, we've got to maintain our wastewater treatment plant, and that requires engineering input. And we also need to make sure that we keep our water and sewer in the city. I mean, the sewer plant is great, but it depends on the uphill, the upstream input to it, too. And so we need to make sure that we're maintaining that. And so when we're doing our roads in Placerville, we have to look at those underground utilities, the water and the sewer, and be able to do something with it, and that requires engineering support. And right now, we're scraping by, but we really need some help, especially for taking on these other things. So I think we, we really do need to do this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, and certainly, we discussed this at budgeting time, that this was our number one priority in being able to fill this position, so I'm excited that we're to the point of being able to do that. Councilmember Yarborough?
Yeah. First off, Melissa, you've been doing a great job wearing both hats, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Dave, quick question. I mean, there's 60,000 in estimated generated funds that we'll be able to raise for this position. Is this median of the road what we're going to generate, or is this top end of what we're going to generate? I mean, I think the point that I'm trying to get to is, can we push this salary higher so we can draw more people in? Is that possible?
We'd have to analyze that, but I have good news. Melissa and her department's doing a great job raising their engineering revenues. They're actually $31,000 over budget.
Nice.
So their budget for engineering fees was $120,000, and they're just over $151,000. So, and I think we'll easily meet our projections to meet the $60,000 budget appropriation.
Okay. So if we tried to push it a little, we'll keep fingers crossed, and maybe we could go farther, because I mean, I'd, I'd just hate to see us put this out there again, and then, once again, we get a lot of unqualified people for this position, and we're still sitting here another month from now, or two months from now, we're trying to bring somebody in. I would almost like to see us try and see if we can push the envelope a little bit to bring somebody that's talented in, that's going to stay, because I think that's where it's going to, where it's going to be. We don't want them to come in and go, okay, they're just enough qualified, and they get a little more experience, and next thing you know, they're moving on. That's kind of my concern.
Can I ask a question? How, like, how many years of experience typically is a associate civil engineer position?
I think it's about five is what we usually look for, but I, we would really specifically be targeting somebody that has experience with state and federally funded projects, someone that can come in and manage projects from day one.
So I think, I think it's a little low, but pretty competitive with private industry. Like, if you look at my company's rate schedule for a five-year engineer, this would be on, like, the lower end of it, but within the range.
Right.
And you don't get all the benefits in private industry that you get as a government employee, so.
Other comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move the recommendation.
I'll second.
Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye, and fingers crossed for a good candidate.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 13, council reports from other agency meetings. Eldorado County Transit Authority did not meet, they meet October 3rd. Transportation Commission, same thing, October 3rd. LAFCO?
We meet tomorrow.
SECAG?
We were just here, and I didn't put it in my opening comments, but just wanted to thank the city for hosting SECAG. I couldn't believe we could all fit in here. I, I thought it would be too small of an area to get the full board and any other people that wanted to come, and I want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Gottberg for also joining us on the little tour we did of Apple Hill, and just talking a little bit about Ag, and as well as projects on Broadway and fiber that Cleve had the chance to talk about as well on the way back. So it was a great meeting, and just a chance to bring the entire region to Placerville. I mean, everyone obviously knows who we are, but I had a couple of members that had actually never been to Placerville, and so this was their first experience being in the city, so I thought that was, that was really good. And it just gives a, you know, you can talk about it in meetings, and, you know, you can state your case, but really, having the ability of, of those other jurisdictions, when we vote on things, to understand us a little bit better is super helpful as we go forward, so. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Pioneer Energy?
Yeah, we met last week. So basically, the, the top three items were update on expansion, approve the fiscal year of 2025 through 2027 strategic plan, and progress report on some of the programs that we have going. Start with update on expansion, looks really good. If, if all of the districts and community, or counties decide to join, the board of directors would go from, I think about the 11 that we have now to 21.
Oh, wow.
They've got a pretty huge amount of people that have all of a sudden approached Pioneer to join Pioneer and get into the system. So with, you know, and what that would mean is that would give Pioneer a lot more buying power for energy, which would benefit all of us, because at that point, we're getting a lower rate for energy, which then we would pass on as much as we possibly can to the communities. So that, keep fingers crossed that we can, you know, move that forward and keep growing like we're growing. Administration approved fiscal year 2025, 2027 strategic plan. It was just pretty much an update of what we had approved over the last couple of years, so of course, we moved forward with that. Programs, progress report on programs. We had several programs that were reported out on, most of them were moving as normal. The one I would like to highlight would be the solar program. It did launch back in August. It started in Eldorado Hills Cameron Park area, and it is projected to launch in Placerville in October 15th of this year. So hopefully, that will be moving out quickly and without any issues.
I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
Will this solar program still be NEM III?
It is not a NEM program.
What is it?
So basically, what this solar program does is, it is put out by Pioneer Energy in conjunction with another corporation that works directly with Tesla.
Oh, okay.
Tesla comes out and puts, evaluates your home, of course, just like any other solar company, puts the solar panels on top of your house, adds battery backup.
Battery, okay.
Yeah, and then it is a secured rate for 25 years, and then, of course, there's, you know, obviously, there's a cost for the battery per month, and then, of course, the secured rate, and it is an after-the-meter program, and it's not a before-the-meter program. So basically, you are using everything that is in your home, based in the battery system and the solar, until the battery gets to a certain point, and then you draw from the grid. So hopefully, you know, you've got enough battery system that you're not drawing from the grid, so.
I've heard, I have heard of this thing.
Yeah. And it seems to be coming out very well. Some of the big targets that they're honestly after is landlords, because at least it will give landlords the opportunity to offer potential renters fixed rates on PG&E rates, or fixed rates on their electricity. So they're not expecting, you know, all of a sudden, they have a 22% increase or a 13% increase, and so on and so forth. So it seems to be being receptive pretty well, so I'm hoping Placerville accepts it just as well as everybody else has, and, and we get some cheaper energy for the folks that we have here. Anyway, that was it.
Thank you. All right. Placerville Fire Safety Council meets October 3rd, and Opportunity Knox.
We meet October 4th.
Great. Thank you. Okay, number 14, requests for future agenda items. Do we have any? Okay, none. We will move to item 15, city manager and staff reports. 15.1, receive and file August 2024 police reports. Chief Ren, do you have anything for us? Okay. 15.2, receive and file August Fire Station 25 Ren reports. Chief Cordera, not here. 15.3, Development Services Department?
I forgot something I want to say.
Okay.
After this is.
Okay. Development permit statistics for the month of 2024. Mr. Rebus?
Yeah, thank you, mayor, members of the council. I don't really have any to add, but I want to highlight the, what I consider a very impressive intake of revenues and impact fees, and that is primarily due to the issuance of the building permit for the Mallard Affordable Housing Project. So that was 72 units that was responsible, or what required a lot of the collection of those fees. So that's why you see that line really going out there compared to last year at the same time period.
But we like it anyways.
And mayor, if I may, I'd like, like to give another one announcement. I was asked by the League of Women Voters to give this announcement, so if it's okay with the council?
Yes.
I want to say that the Placerville City Council Candidate Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Eldorado County, it will be held on Wednesday, October the 2nd, and it'll be here in Town Hall, and that'll be at 7:00 PM. And we have, it'll feature the- And we have, it'll feature the three Placerville City Council candidates, Mr. Ryan Carter, Ms. Jackie No, and Mr. Michael Saragosa. We have three candidates running for two seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rebas. All right, you said you had a question, Vice Mayor?
There was something, you know, when you get to say things you did over the last little bit. I was actually, I had the honor of being on the interview panel for the--
I had the honor of being on the interview panel for the county fire marshal position. And there were two candidates, they were both fantastic. And I just want to, I, you know, it's always fun to do these things, and I just want to say that when they fill that position with either person, it's really going to make, they're trying to get the fire, the fire prevention side a little bit more robust, some succession planning, and both candidates were great. So I just wanted to mention that, because fire is always on our mind.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we will open 15 up for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back. Number 16 is upcoming items, which you can read for yourself, and that brings us to number 17, adjournment at 6:52. Thank you, everybody.
You did a real good--